Tell us all about our wonderful jail.
Well, thank you very much. I think it's been about two years since I was here. And we had just opened last time I was here and we were just trying to get through those startup pains and figure out how to run everything. And so, boy, what a difference a year has made, what a difference two years has made. So, thank you for the invitation and I have a few slides to walk through with you, but if you have questions, please feel free to stop me. So, just kind of as a reminder, and again, I know many of you have been to the facility, many of you are aware of the organization, but just for people that may not be familiar with us, SCORE is an independent governmental agency. It was created by the seven-member cities, which is Auburn, Buren, Des Moines, Federal Way, Renton, Sea-Tac, Kentuckahilla. There is an administrative board that oversees the organization. And this year in 2014, we have four elected mayors and then three city council members. And as the director, I report directly to the administrative board. We also have an operations board, which is made up of the seven-member cities' police chiefs and a finance committee, which has the seven-member cities' finance directors on it. And all of these, all of the boards meet every month. And so, we have very good oversight and very good involvement on the part of each of the member cities. And as an agency, we're an independent administrative agency. We are unique. We're the only jail like this in Washington State. And very often, people that aren't familiar with us assume that we're a privately-run agents or a for-profit jail. And we're not. We're a government agency and created under the Interlocal Cooperation Act. And there is also a SCORE PDA, which is the Public Development Authority. And the Public Development Authority exists for the issuance of the construction bonds for the facility. And we have another 27 years to pay off those construction bonds. So, we are making progress little by little, but still have ways to go to get those retired. And when the bonds are repaid and full, then the PDA will go away. As I said, we are truly unique. We're the only regional jail in Washington State. And we are owned by the seven-member cities. We serve a population of about 340,000 people. We are the sixth-largest jail in Washington State. And we were never designed to be in the money-making business. Our goal was to kind of control our destiny for the future. Remember, nobody wants to build a jail. The cities didn't decide one day that we wanted to come together to build a jail. We did this because of our own future capacity and because we were given an ultimatum by King County in 2001 that they were no longer going to be able to manage the city's inmate population. So, those are kind of the forces that came together to have us work together. And King County is also, kind of the western United States is unique in the fact that most of the cities or the counties that send people to jail end up bearing the burden of that cost. If you go to the east coast of the United States, those costs are covered very often by the sheriff's office. And there is no bill that goes to those cities or to a county sheriff to have those individuals booked into a jail. But here, kind of in a west coast phenomenon, it's the arresting agency that gets delivered that bill. And so, by comparison, right now, in King County, it's about $200 for a booking fee to walk in the door. And then, it's an additional, I think about $142 a day to put people in jail at King County. So, it's very, very expensive. When I talk to colleagues across the country, they're amazed that agencies pay that kind of money. So, it's a significant amount of money that is spent by the agencies each year for jail services. So, as I said, we all came together back there in 2001 because we were told that we would need to remove the prisoners from King County Jail. And there was no space. There was no money to build a new jail. And there wasn't a lot of support. Not many agencies embrace the idea of building a jail. But at the same time, there weren't a lot of options either. So, the cities did come together and in 2009, we broke ground. What's interesting about this picture is it was the original administrative board and Mayor Law is there, second from the left. But the board, it talks about how many things have changed. So, the first three mayors, Mayor Hagerton, Mayor Law, and what was Mayor Sheckler from Des Moines are there. The other four original founding cities all have new administrators. And so, the board has seen much change as well over the past several years. And so, we have three new members on the board this year as well on the administrative board. So, it took us about two years to build the facility. And in September 2011, we opened. And the project, about $5 million under budget and about six weeks ahead of schedule. So, we moved the first prisoners in in September. And we operated on a limited scale just for the cities of Renton and Auburn for those first couple of months. And then, in 2012, we started accepting prisoners from all of the member cities. And then, in 2013, we were given the direction to go out and market the beds, to go ahead and sell those vacant beds that we had up to our existing staffing level. And in 2013, we were staffed for about 380 inmates. So, on this chart, you can see where our average daily population has been. And the blue line is 2012. So, 2012, we were running anywhere from about 350 down to a low of about 300. And as I said, in 2013, the direction that we got was fill the beds that we had. And the green line represents 2013. And you can see from March going forward, we have had a significant increase, month after month after month of that inmate population. And in December, we were at 524. In January, a month later, our average daily population was 624. So, this evening, when I left the jail, we had just under 600 inmates. Our high back in January was 677 actually in the building at one time. Our billable total for the day was 704 inmates. So, that is a record. We have 800 beds and we have an operational capacity of about 700 beds. The reason why there's a little bit of a reduction there, why there's a net loss of those beds is because of classification. You can't always use all of the beds all of the time. And the easiest demonstration of classification is male and female. I can't house male and females together in the same pod. So, if I have 100 extra beds on the male side and I have three women that come in, I just lost 97 beds. So, we also know because of special housing, we have a net loss of some beds. So, for example, in our mental health, we may not be able to always house all of those inmates together. So, we have a net loss in beds there. So, around 700, 725, we're pretty full. And so, we were hitting that number just a couple of weeks ago. As I said, we're down a little bit to about 599 today. And we're happy when the numbers are in the fives because six is really pushing us to be that high. As I said, you've seen a pretty significant increase since the middle of 2013. So, what does that look like for us on a daily basis? This is the number of bookings that we have in an average for each month. So, again, 2012, we were running about 34, 35 bookings per day. When you look into 2013, by the end of the year, we were up to about 50 bookings a day. Right now, we're running at about 60, 65 bookings. Again, last month, we had 99 bookings on one day. That is the busiest day that we've had. That is a lot of people walking in the door on one day. So, it makes us very, very busy. Total number of bookings per month, again, you see that that's reflected by those individual days. 2012, we were pretty consistent, give or take about 1,1100 a day. Right now, we're at about 1,595. Last year, in total, we had about 16,000 bookings. This year, if things don't change, we're on track to be at about 20,000 bookings. So, the numbers just continue to grow month after month after month. As I said, what a difference a year has made from where we were. So, how long are people in jail? As you know, we hold misdemeanor offenders. And this chart kind of tells you who's in the jail. And recognize that 93% of the inmates are there for less than 30 days. We have an average length of stay for the member cities of just about eight and a half days. And when you factor in the contract member cities, they actually have a little bit longer length of stay for us. And so, altogether, it's coming in at about 10 days. So, it's a very, very quick turnaround. And as you can see from this chart, 93% of the inmates are in and out in less than 30 days. But certainly, the biggest percentage, the bulk of them, are out within that first three days, over 50% of them. So, we have a very, very short length of stay. Why are people coming to jail? The top 10 number of offenses here. So, theft is obviously the number-one reason there at the top. DOC violators, these are people that have what are considered administrative violations. So, they have not reported to their probation officer. They don't necessarily have an enrollment card for a 12-step program. They, let me see, I'm trying to think, they had a dirty urine analysis, something like that. It's not a criminal offense. It's an administrative violation. And then, DWLS is driving while license suspended, assault fourth DV. And you can see going down through the list. But certainly, theft is the number-one reason that people are coming to jail. Our estimate, so everybody wants to know about what it is, what is it that we're costing? So, back in 2008, we came to you when you were looking at, should we create SCORE? And we gave you three scenarios about what the most likely cost was for the Renton's contribution to SCORE, the worst-case scenario and kind of the best-case scenario. And so, that middle blue line, most likely, you said you'd be at about $5.5 million. And that was our estimate in 2008. And so, I'm happy to say that in 2013 and 2014, we're hitting that kind of most likely estimate, almost exactly where we said you were going to be. So, six years later, we're very proud of the fact that your numbers are pretty close to that.
Is that adjusted dollars or?
No.
Wow. And it's really good.
Yeah. And revenues, as I said, this is a big driver for us in that population increase is, can be attributed to some of our contract inmates. And so, in 2012, we had about $600,000 in revenue, not very much. And we had estimated that we would be at about $3 million. So, we were well below that in 2012. And so, we had to go back and readjust what our estimates were and our budget for that. So, then in 2013, we budgeted that we would have $690,000. And at year-end, we ended up with $4.1 million. In 2014, we projected $3.5 million for our revenue. And that budget was approved back in September. So, it was before we had that year-end number of 4.1 million. So, our 2014 projection is 3.5, but just through January, we've billed just under $800,000. So, we are well on track to reach our budget projection probably by the end of the first quarter for 2014. So, that's wonderful news. We're hoping to be able to reduce certainly the member cities' contributions in the following year. And as I said, it's only the January revenue. So, it's very, very early. But certainly, at this point, we're very, very pleased with the revenue numbers that we're seeing at this point. And for us, our priority is to make sure we're providing excellent service to our member cities. You know, that's what's important to us. Our goal is always to get our law enforcement officers out of the jail within 10 minutes so that they're in and out. And I'm hoping Commander Leibman can attest to that and that, you know, our job is to work cooperatively with our law enforcement partners. And so, I think we have developed a good relationship with them and a good reputation for providing quality service. So, the year ahead, our biggest challenge right now is managing the inmate population because it has grown so rapidly over the last 60 to 90 days. So, we're really looking at efficiencies in our booking process and in our reporting processes. We still have some things that we do manually. We have to notify each of the courts every day about everybody that's come in the last 24 hours. So, we're looking at automating some of these processes so we're not having to do them manually. And with the 2014 budget, we also, because of the increase in the population, we're authorized 12 additional corrections officers. So, we're in the process of recruiting and hiring for those right now. If our population remains as high as it is, we're going to have to add additional staff before the year's out. And staff attrition is something that we're looking at this year that we haven't had. We've really had no turnover since we started. Unfortunately, many law enforcement office agencies are hiring now. They've kind of had a lull for budget reasons over the last several years. So, they haven't hired. So, we've been able to retain our staff. And we know we've got several that are out there on hiring lists going to law enforcement agencies in the year ahead. So, that we're going to need to keep up with staff attrition and keep hiring this year. And we're also looking at implementing remote video visiting. This is really important. You know, we do most of our, at the facility, we use most of the visiting. That is done via video link there anyway. But so, so many people aren't able to come to the facility. So, we really would like to have them have the ability to access visiting while they're still at their home and try and keep the inmate population connected with their family. Everybody that's there is loved by somebody. And if we can keep them connected, it does make that transition back to the community so much better. All of these people are going back to the community. They're not going to prison. They're all going back to the community. So, if we can keep them reconnected with those family members, with employers, it makes a better, much better transition. And hopefully, will help reduce recidivism. And in 2012, our first year, we saw that we had about 35% of the population that came back. We were a new facility, very short-term. We've seen that number nearly double this year. So, this year, 2013, we're sitting at about 54%. That is repeat offenders that are coming back. And we also hit a new record with the number of charges that came with an inmate. We had an inmate that came in that had 50 different charges this past year. And we had one inmate that was with us for the entire calendar year. So, we do have those exceptions to all of those rules that I told you, you know, about really being short-term. Most people in and out fairly quickly. But we do always have those few exceptions to the rules. Really, the secret to our success is all of our staff. We have pictures of our employees of the year across the top there, both our corrections officer of the year and our sergeant of the year, both from Renton Jail. So, I'm very, very happy about that. They're homegrown Renton employees that have gone on to SCORE and been wonderful success members. And the three officers to the left all received lifesaving awards this past year for interceding in suicides and so, preventing inmates from harming themselves. So, we always like to recognize them. But this is absolutely the best group of people at any jail in the state, far none. So, they are, they are the reason for our success. They are very, very committed to providing wonderful service. They recognize the component of customer service and how we're not here to say no. You know, jails traditionally do not play very well with other partners in the criminal justice system. And we've had to make sure that we have established that that's not how we're going to be and that we're going to work with our partners. And we exist to provide a service for you. And so, I'm happy to answer any other questions that you have. Otherwise, I am through with what I've prepared.
Penny, when you started, you said that one of the reasons that we decided to go to our own facility as an entity is that the King County booking fee is $200 a day. And then, just to, I mean, just to walk through the front doors, $200. And then, another $160, $65 a day or?
I think it's about $145, right?
About $145 a day. And my understanding at SCORE, A, we don't charge a booking fee. And what is our daily fee to the?
Right. You're correct. There's no booking fee. And the daily fee ranges from $90 to $135, depending on what services people are getting and what type of inmate they're sending us.
And I guess, just, I'll take some privilege here because I've been there as many, and know the problems of a jail. But for that money, they're providing mental health, dental, medical.
Yeah.
And everyone is screened for that. And having been there several times, not as a visitor. As a visitor.
Only as a visitor.
Only as a visitor. It's amazing, A, how professional all the staff is. They are just wonderful people. But also, how clean it is. I mean, I'm used to a dirty, dainty, smelly old place. As a jail is, no matter how you tried to clean it up, you couldn't, except what they've done downstairs are the reach. There, it is clean. I mean, it, it just is so clean that I'm just amazed of how that can, how you can run a jail with that many people and be that clean. And I really commend you. And it's, it's been a real savings for all our cities. And as we get a little bit more revenue from these outside agencies, we'll be able to cut our contributions too. And I've taken more than enough time. So, anybody else have some questions, comments?
I think I would just agree with you, Don. I got the opportunity of Maryla and Penny taking me on a tour. And you could practically eat off the floors how clean it is there. It's very clean. And the services that they're providing to the folks are invaluable. So, yeah, I'd agree.
And the other thing that Penny mentioned that is so important to a police officer is that 10-minute turnaround on dropping a prisoner, getting booked in. When we were booking into King County, sometimes the officers would be there for two hours, standing in line with their prisoner. So, that officer wasn't on the street out doing his job. I mean, he was doing his job because he'd take care of the prisoner. But he wasn't back in the cities to help. And this, and that 10-minute turnaround is just phenomenal in the, in the savings to the city and in our lost time with the officers. So, that is, those are the little things that I don't think the public really understands how important it is. And the other thing that is so important about this is the sighting. Nobody wants to have a jail. But Des Moines, the city of Des Moines was, opened their arms and had us. Maybe it's because we were in the flight pattern for Sea-Tac. But when you're in the building, you would never know that a plane ever is going across. It is so, so quiet. And also, they're giving education opportunities to the people who are there. But I think you got to comment on that one prisoner from Auburn that's been there for what? Since you opened? Or is he gone now?
He was actually from Renton.
Oh, wow.
And he was with us from the day we opened till October 15th. So, just a little over two years. And we have not seen him come back. And I was familiar with him from the 20 years that I was here at Renton. So, I was expecting him to return, but he has not been back. So, that's actually encouraging. And hopefully, he has turned his life around.
If I may, yeah. Yeah. So, and I'm not as expert with jails as Don, who spent his entire career in law enforcement. But as a reminder, this is all misdemeanors? Is that right?
Right. So, people that are there, that current charge is a misdemeanor charge. The exception to that is our member cities. So, for example, if Renton this evening arrested somebody on a felony assault charge, they could bring them to us and then we will transport them to King County Jail prior to midnight that day. And so, that's a huge service to the member cities, especially since RJC won't accept people after 5 o'clock. So, it's easier for them to bring them to us and then we'll get them transported downtown rather than to have to send your officers downtown. But they're not held there. They're just held until the next trip.
Is anyone held there for, say, two months or whatever? It's on misdemeanor charges?
Yes.
Yeah. So, I mean, I, I think this whole thing's been a great idea. And you've done a great job managing it, you and all the staff. And I think the idea of separating the people serving misdemeanor terms from felony terms is a good idea, frankly. And I've appreciated all the interest you've taken in, you know, providing the good services, keeping it clean, making sure they stay attached to the community. I mean, as you pointed out, you know, the majority of them are only there eight days or something because misdemeanor terms are often very short. But I think in general, the idea, I mean, these are people that, you know, need to get back into the community and are easily rehabilitated relative to maybe the more hardened criminals that are in our prisons or whatever. So, I think, I think the way we've done this is great. And I think when I look at the costs, I had expected that, I thought, you know, right after this facility was new, that we'd be kind of on par with what we'd have been paying King County. And I expected in the, you know, later years, King County was charging us more and more and more and more and more. And we'd be able to keep our costs more steady. I'm very pleased to see that already, you know, we're saving significant amount of money over if we were with King County. So, terrific. Good job. Thanks.
Anybody else? Dave, you want to, you're here, you're?
I have nothing to add. It's a great facility. I agree with everything that's been said.
All right. Let me ask a question. So, the person that had been there for a year and then?
What did he do?
What did he do? I mean, if most of them are short?
Are we not allowed to talk about it?
Secret. I'm consulting with local law enforcement on this matter. I'm assuming it would be an alcohol offense, maybe a domestic violence-related alcohol offense. But I'm not, I'm not sure. I'm happy to find out.
Oh, that's all right.
And what happens with misdemeanor offenses, the maximum sentence is one year. And so, when we see people there for longer than one year, it's because they're running multiple charges sequentially. And so, they could have, for example, a DWI sentence that they were committed to 365 days. And then, they have a theft charge on top of that for another 90 days. So, that's how they're in custody for more than one calendar.
So, as long as it's, they're a misdemeanor, they can stay there? Otherwise, if it's a felony, then they have to go to county or?
Yes.
A different facility. So, okay. So, do you, is it just member cities that bring their people there? Or is there an opportunity for other cities? Are you selling any beds to anybody else?
Yes. Actually, so, we're right now providing services to 22 other contract agencies. And so, originally, that started with King County cities. But we actually have been contacted by cities in both Pierce County and Snohomish County. And part of it has to do with kind of the regional status of jails. Pierce County has had some significant financial issues with their jail. They had about a $5 million budget deficit regarding their jail operations. And so, they have reduced their capacity in order to balance their budget. Similarly, Snohomish County Jail has had a number of deaths within their jail over the last three years. And so, they are working on reducing their capacity as well in order to come in compliance with some concerns that have been raised by the National Institute of Corrections. And so, we've kind of seen the effects, both of those, from both counties outside of King County. So, we hadn't originally anticipated that we would necessarily draw inmates from that far away. But we do. And as I said, the contract population continues to grow.
So, I also remember that at least originally, you weren't using the full facility? Is that still the case or?
No, we're pretty much using everything. When we're seating at 650, 700 inmates, we're using all of the facility.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Yes.
Other questions? And I think it's important to note that the prisoners that are felons, once we can get them charged and into King County, then they become the state's responsibility and not the city's responsibility. So, that's the key, I think. That's the key to that. And so, we are not paying, the city isn't paying that large sum of money to keep them in the King County facility. It's just, it's a quirk in law, which is, happens to be in our favor for a change.
All right. So, let me ask another question. See, you say things and then it pops up with other, other questions in my mind. So, when you have a felony person dropped off, is King County paying for? Who's paying for then, that, the costs associated with having that person in your facility?
Right. So, we only take those from our member cities. So, Auburn, you know, Auburn, Buren, Des Moines, Federal Way, Renton, Sea-Tac, Kentuckahilla. And we keep that inmate until we can transfer them on the next run to King County Jail. And so, we go three times a day. And so, they go before whatever that next run is. And their cost is just covered in SCORE overhead because it's a service to our member cities to do that.
But there would be costs associated with it from another agency?
Well, no.
Perhaps you don't take?
They're usually there for a few hours. And so, the costs usually are not terribly significant.
Okay.
From time to time, we'll take somebody to King County Jail and they'll be refused. And so, if they get refused typically for medical reasons and they kind of, we call it bounce back to us, then we go ahead and bill whatever jurisdiction brought them in. So, if Renton brought them in, then Renton would be responsible for that day that they were in custody.
So, they send them in and because of medical reasons, they send them back? Is that because they don't have, there's no bed space or?
It's a variety of reasons. But sometimes, when people go to jail, they'll make things up in an effort to try not to get booked. And so, one of those, there's, you know, like probably five or six kind of, get out of jail for free phrases. And if you've been through the jail system enough, you know what those targeted kind of statements are. And so, they'll get to booking and they'll say things like, I was just in a car accident and I have a head injury and I blacked out. So, then they'll get refused at booking even though they were never in a car accident. So, then we have to be able to produce the documentation that says this person really wasn't in a car accident or take them to Harborview and wait with them to be screened. wasn't in a car accident or take them to Harborview and wait with them to be screened. So it's easier to bounce them back to us, get the proper records and then send them back to the jail. So sometimes there can be a delay of a day or so and then our medical staff calls their medical staff and we get it all worked out.
Well, good to know that, that you make excuses and not get booked.
You got to have the right excuse though, so.
Okay. All right, thank you.
But when they use it, you track it down, it sounds like.
Yeah, yeah.
You don't really let them?
We have to. You don't get away with it. Another example of that is the Prison Rape Elimination Act that came into effect a year ago. So it's legislation that's really aimed at reducing sexual offenses within the facility, be it inmate on inmate or correctional staff involving inmates. And so one of the things that happened, what kind of went around was everybody that went to jail claimed that they had been, just been a victim of a sexual assault in an attempt to hope to defer that booking. And once they found out that didn't get them out of jail, then those claims have gone away now too. But it's just kind of whatever the, the claim de jour is, that effort to try not to be booked.
Well, thank you.
Any other questions, Greg?
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm a little late here. I had a previous meeting, but hi Penny, how are you?
I'm wonderful, thank you and yourself?
I'm doing fine. I enjoyed my night stay at the facility.
There you go.
Grand opening years ago.
I wish I could say the quality of the food is as good as it was that night.
That night it was pretty good. I bet it doesn't get any better than that night. You know, I'll, I'll touch bases with you to kind of get a summary over, you know, some of the things that, you know, I might've missed and who knows, I might pop in to visit you again soon.
Happy to have you come anytime.
Voluntarily, of course.
Of course, voluntarily, yes.
Okay, there are no more questions. Penny and Dave, we'd like to thank you for, for coming. It's been very informative and I hope the audience, both here and on TV, got a good insight into what we're doing to, A, take care of the prisoners. And I can't emphasize enough, and it's always been in Renton's case and all the other ones, to take the best care of a prisoner that they can. But when you have a good facility like this and the staff, it just makes it a lot easier and a lot, lot better for us. But I've been up there, like I say, watched, watched them work and they are concerned about the welfare of the prisoners and they're concerned that they get education. And every jailer there would hope that every prisoner that comes through the door would not come back. But a lot of them, they're on first name basis, so. Anyway, thank you very much. You're doing a wonderful job.
Thank you.
And we really appreciate it. And with that, committee, the hold is adjourned and we'll meet as a council at 7:00.
All right.